So they won't get in my piggy bank and take my twenty-three cents?
You know me, I'm not just gonna say hi.
Not from this.
Oh.
Not saying never.
Let me know when you're ready, Todd. Ms. Bling? Are you?
So how do I get one of these?
Here's your Yellow Jacket color, you at the board meeting tonight? Well, I was Yellow Jacket first. You could've just said yes, but Mike gets Bengals too. I really wanted to see him play Dallas, but Dallas kinda blew that.
Matt, why didn't you go to Kiwanis today?
I don't think next week will be as easy.
Oh, oh, they said a sickness, oh, so and I didn't know, I said...
We'll see.
Oh, okay, well, I was going to hear you, but...
Uh-huh.
They had a lot of people there for you. No, that's okay, I thought you'd like to know.
I hated to see him get hit. I hated to see him go down. I thought, oh my god, your one is knee. I think...
Thank you, Todd.
This is the year that everybody sits on edge with injuries.
For all the stuff Saturday.
Brian, Brian, we're ready to talk, right? He'll be ready to talk.
That still gets quite a few right there, so many.
Did this get emailed?
No, he passed it out.
Passed this out Saturday.
Oh, that's if you left at eleven, I'm sorry, yeah, he passed this out.
Breaker, breaker, one nine, give me a radio check.
I'm sorry, I should've thought of that. How'd she do? Oh, good. Well, if you wanna look at that, go ahead, that's...
So Brian, what this is telling you is they're hurting for time to catch up, so keep that in mind when you talk.
I mean, there's a lot of...
I read it, I read it, sold!
But, you know, no way.
Right now, we're seven minutes behind.
And I thought even at the three thousand, and that's...
That only gives you three.
There are quite a few.
We have four slides, so that's one.
We've seen it.
People that I talked to, nobody wanted the five thousand. The constituents I talked to, they all, they growled.
How recent was that Catherine Street victory?
They accepted the three. So, that's...
I think it was...
Pardon me?
Go ahead and get started, I'll get the audio on when it's up.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm...
We're now going to the streets and public buildings with Mr. Severance to discuss the CDBG project.
Yes, Mr. Ball, City Engineer, is here to discuss these.
Welcome, welcome, Council, welcome on. All right, so I'm told I have to talk fast, so I'll try to be clear and fast. So first up, we will talk about North Sandusky sidewalks, West Side. We feel very successful about the East Side project. This is what is commonly known as our formula money. And we have our regular allocation. We talked over the weekend about a small plus-up, so we can get the last two blocks and get connected to our Hartland Comerous Park without, without leaving out a section. So that is the first slide. Are there any questions on that? If there are not, we would ask to pass this, so we can roll toward construction tonight.
My only comment is I'm really excited that this side is getting done as well, because a lot of community members down there wanted both sides done, so...
Yep, and we've heard those requests, and again, those meetings that John Francis had many years ago, we've prioritized this project. Okay, next page, we call this one a crowd pleaser. We have the Catherine Street Aquatic Habitat area that we plan to de-water and hopefully stop selling out engines. I believe the question was about the funding breakdown. You have the sheet, we have water, wastewater, stormwater, and our Brick Street, and then we also have our CDBG four hundred and seventy thousand allocation. This is picking up where we left off on Vine Street, taking us all the way to Koshokton Avenue, replacing all the utilities. Gas lines have already been replaced, but all the city utilities replaced. So there's a couple pages, I think.
So that catches both sides of Chestnut then?
Yes, both sides of Chestnut.
And one side, and the one block between Vine and Bond.
Yes, the Vine Street, the High Street, the Chestnut, and the Koshok. So there's a lot of stormwater issues there, we call emergencies, I think. That's that, so...
So that'll be total brick replacement?
Yes.
Pull them up, save them, put them back down, brick replacement.
Change out the utilities, put down seven inches of concrete, brand-new curb, sand, put the bricks back.
Another hundred years.
Another hundred years. The next page is Stumpf and Northview. I can't remember if we have this on the agenda for tonight or not, while we're here. This project has scored very well in the initial application for the OPWC, so it is in the top two projects for Knox County's program, so that is not in stone yet, but we want to give you that update. See the breakdown? Again, the Clinton Township will be helping us to restore the road after the work is done. This gets us some new customers, and the picture is the Juicy's leaving a unmaintained septic tank that is on a lot that's too small to have proper... Questions. Then the last page is, not none of these are on for tonight, but just general awareness. The Buckeye Edition project also is in the top two, one and two of the district OPWC grants. You can see the financial breakdown, the township is kicking in their last, last breath of their ARPA money for that project. The Dan Emmett project, which we will not ask for construction this year, the mayor just signed the grant, but we'll work on design this year, and that one will be slated for construction next year. Again, an area where we've had habitual wastewater problems. Probably the biggest thing is sidewalks and wastewater, but while we're there, there will be some... Well, the wastewater is occasioned by the lack of stormwater system, so there's quite a bit of good work. Again, back to John's hard work a few years ago, getting the input from our citizens, telling us what they need and where they need, so...
This does not include the ten-foot wide sidewalk, correct? That's next, that's twenty-four?
Yes, that is not. With the ten-foot wide sidewalk, that will have some narrower sections, is the leverage project that allowed us to get the... It's a partner project, maybe the best word to say.
But it's not scheduled for till twenty-four, correct? Didn't I see that in your paperwork?
Yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five is where we are right now.
It's all the Buckeye Edition and the city?
None of it is in the city.
What's that?
None of it is in the city.
I didn't think it was, so...
Yep.
How do we get involved if it's not the city?
So we have a fifty-year water contract with Clinton Township. The county is actually leading the project, because it is their Community Development Block grant funding the project. The township has applied for OPWC, put in ARPA money, and then we're making up the last share, and we will get the customers, the tap fees, they will get a slight... They get, let me look at Terry, they get ten percent of the, of the surcharge goes back to them. We get the other thirty percent.
So the six thirty-seven will be the city share?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Severance?
Brian, just to clarify as well, the two traffic lights on Mansfield, that's not part of the Dan Emmett thing necessarily?
It is also considered leverage.
Okay.
So it's correct, because it's not a CDBG project, we count up all the projects we're doing in the neighborhood, and we add those to the grant, because what the Community Development Block grant at the state and federal level, they wanna see us putting in about a one-to-one.
Yeah.
And so if we, they see us investing money, they see the state investing money and the federal government, then they will come in. So that's very similar to the project. We use the North Sandusky Street Safety Project to get the Belmont and Mulberry sidewalks fire hydrants, so that we use that same leverage. So this is, you know, we do one O dot, one CDBG, one O dot, one CDBG, and we throw in a little OPWC, and we got it.
Good.
And again, the two things, let's see, I think we only have two of these on for tonight, if I'm correct. We would ask that we pass both of these.
Anything else, Mr. Severance?
We're good, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna adjourn the streets and public buildings, we're now gonna move to utilities with Mrs. Woods to discuss clarifier number two. Seems like I've heard that before.
Yeah, thank you. Brian, I'll ask you to step back up there for a second, because tonight we're gonna have Resolution twenty-two dash one thirty-three up for its third and final reading. So I think it was back in the middle of December, I got an email, a Brian email, Todd and I about putting this on and giving it its first reading, and we discussed it at the December meeting. So I had some folks that list, I was not able to give the utilities commission meeting in January. So at the December meeting, I think the number was thrown out, this was gonna be three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But at the Utilities Commission meeting was thrown out, it was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then there'd been like a price increase, because we didn't get it done in December. Can you kind of clarify that, should we have done this in December?
Yes.
So why, why didn't we?
I don't know. I thought we, we had asked to, we thought we asked in the committee meeting to pass it that night, so it was two twenty-five was our estimate. And now it is, this quote, the quote we have now expires April first. So it is now three oh nine for the same work.
Okay, so the email I got was we'd give it the first reading that night and have a meeting. So I don't know how the miscommunication happened there, but I even double-checked my email, because I, again, sent Skinner to do that meeting, so, yeah, if we can go save a third of a project in the future, can you make that a little clearer with me, please? Because that was not what was... So I guess tonight we're gonna, we're gonna pass this and get it done, because we need that redundancy in water.
Yeah, so just for a little historic reference, the EPA did a sanitary facility inspection October, they have a letter report from October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, it recommends action on this. This was a thing, it was on the bubble, between being on the violation letter and the recommendation letter. So it's, we have not had another inspection since then, but we anticipate the next inspection, this will be on the violation list, so...
And so do we, you said it's about three hundred and nine thousand? Is that what we budgeted for this this year then, or not?
Yeah, I think so, we, we, yeah.
Well, I think that's why I was confused, because at that December meeting, you said we budgeted three twenty-five, and then...
Two twenty-five.
No, at the December meeting, I went back and listened, it was three twenty.
Okay.
And so I just...
Yeah, then we're fine, because we, we're at three, the current price is three oh nine.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, thank you.
You were adjourning that, we're back on time, back on schedule. We're moving now to Water and Wastewater Employees with Employees Community Relations Committee, Mr. Francis.
I've got a couple, couple more minutes, don't I?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Go for it.
I didn't realize Mr. Zick wasn't gonna be here until Saturday. He's out of town, so... With that said, last meeting regarding ordinance twenty-two twenty-two forty-seven for Water Wastewater Employees, this is the third time we've revised this. And I don't know, I go to Rob, or the mayor, but who, well, who proofreads these? Because the first one, no, just hear me out, the first one was September, it's from right, September twelfth, twenty-two, and we voted on it. And it went through. Something wasn't right. So come back to us in November of twenty-two. We voted on it, little hesitation, comes back to us a couple of months later, actually a month later, something's not right. So we gotta vote on it again. Now, this just draws suspicion as to who, who reads these, how do you miss this, and now it's such an important thing, that's not on this piece, but it was overlooked. And, and again, it's a trust factor, and this is coming back to us a third time. It could come back to us now, and I could table this indefinitely. Now, I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't wanna be hardball like that, I understand what's going on, what, what administration's trying to do, but whoever proofreads these has to do a better job, because I know none of these went through on the first reading. So there was time to look them over, clarify them, look them over some more. And all that happens between September and January is confusion. What's right and what's wrong? What did we really vote on in the beginning? That's the reason I called this, this committee meeting, was because I wanted to voice that openly, that that's a problem, because here we are again. Is this coming back to us in February or March? Does something was missed? You know, I, I don't know. It'll just rot, it'll just, it'll just raise some more suspicion. So I, I don't know who, who clarifies these, proofreads them.
I'll take a stab at it, Councilman. I can tell you that we were experiencing a lot of turnover during that time and turmoil, and we just missed account. We missed account on that union position.
Each one of these, each one of these went up to the third reading, I do believe. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think each one of these went up to its third reading. So there was time to see if there had to be any adjustments. The one in November, it, it went three readings. And then it's right back here within three weeks, and it's gone three readings. So I, I get, there's turnover, there's this, there's that, but that should've been caught. That was a major, that was a major part on this piece of legislation, and, and I've, I've just heard others that, that, okay, what are they trying to do here? So my, my, my part of this committee meeting was, if anybody's got any questions about the validity of these, now it's time to ask. Because I, I really don't have a problem, but if it takes this to point out that if you have to keep bringing legislation back to us, that's not been clarified or looked at, that's when we have problems. Because we're wanting to work with you, but this is the third time it's coming back, and I hope we don't see it in February or March. Anybody have any questions?
I'd like, did you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that what Mike Hillier really brought this to light, because when he had said, hey, we're eliminating extra union positions, that's where I insisted we double-check this, and that's when we realized there was a typo in the legislation, because of Mike's comments. So I wanna thank Mr. Hillier for standing up...
I didn't know that when I asked him to speak.
Standing up for our union employees that we do need, so that's what I wanted to say, thank you.
Doesn't matter, I'm still voting no. Just like I did the last legislation, I disagree with the whole thing. It was... This was a design we heard from Mr. Zick a long time ago. I think Tammy could, I mean, I don't know, so I'm not sure, I don't know, argue with the mayor about the turnover or anything like this, but I think it's been pretty much Mr. Zick, between him and what he's told you, any of that, back and forth, but it doesn't matter either way to me, because you know how I stand on this.
I think the goal was a net zero, and so we're actually at less than zero because of this accidental deletion of employees, so... He's been trying to balance the math, so that we're not adding extra expense as we're restacking employees, and this was somehow lost in the spreadsheet, so...
But was it not communicated just to begin with, that yes, there were people who are currently union employees that were being moved up, and that we were not acting, that was originally communicated?
Right, and that's the plan, it's just we deleted an extra person.
Well, it is because we were taking a lot of different job titles. It used to be, this is what the current legislation, it has one, two, three, four lines in the wastewater department, and that's where the error was. There used to be about a dozen, and so what we have done is, through the negotiations with the union, eliminated a lot of this sort of very narrow job classifications and expanded them. And as we, as Mr. Zick was putting them together, we eliminated one of the lines, and it was not then added back up into the general one that we had created. That's the error that was made.
Any more questions?
I'm done, Mr. President.
We're gonna adjourn the Party Creative Relations, we move now to Finance and Budget, Mrs. Seville, line and account transfers.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, would you like to come forward?
I didn't do it, ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't do it.
You look awful guilty.
It's the black.
That I have been known to do.
Um, you made, gave us the tabulation?
Yes.
The sheets, so we had that. I for one don't like five thousand dollars, I prefer three thousand. When I looked through there, I saw thirty-two that would be saved for twenty twenty-one, and twenty-two for twenty twenty-two would be what would be, you wouldn't have to come to us for, by adding those up. But I don't know how everybody else feels. I went around and asked constituents and got feelings on the amount, and the people I talked to, they did not like five thousand. They were pretty much, that was too big of a jump. So I for one would wanna change it to three thousand, but we'll go through and ask everybody how they feel. Do you wanna say anything about what you figured here, Scott?
Listen to Council first, then we'll have a discussion.
Okay, Mel, do you wanna start?
I'm, I'm fine with a higher amount. We've got a sixty million, right?
I'm sorry.
Sixty million dollar budget, and I, I think that a lot of that that comes to us is not necessary to know, and I did mention in our meeting that if we had an email or some kind of a just notification, and then we have the opportunity to bring that up and question that if we need to, I would be fine with that.
Sure. Sounds good.
John?
I'm good with the higher amount. It's, it's, it's more of a sensible, how long have you been working with the five hundred dollars?
Since nineteen ninety-eight.
And, and due diligence is on us, and I, I get the, I get the trust factor, but since nineteen eighty-eight, you haven't messed with five hundred dollars, and, and I, I get it, that's, but to get the job done and do it prudently, I, I think if, if we were to set it at the higher number, that would allow things to flow a lot quicker for you.
You're talking about twelve, twelve, in twenty twenty-two, that you're talking about twelve, ten and two. So you're not talking about a huge amount there, too. Tammy?
Well, I, I guess, from my experience and what I do, I see prices double about every seven year. And so when I look at something we had set in ninety-eight, you know, we've, we've gone twenty-five years, so the first seven years, that five hundred bucks probably should've been up to five hundred. And in that next seven years, probably should've been up to two thousand. And then the third seven years probably should've been brought up to four thousand, and now we're way into the next seven years, so I am more than comfortable with five thousand. Price, just delivery price can change that much, and for him to have to come back to us on something, I, I'm comfortable. I would be comfortable, what Terry said, that position, just how costs have increased, I think, that's my comfort level.
Okay.
And I'll share with, since Mrs. Wood had the comment about a thousand, Council at the time was willing to set it at a thousand, and I said, no, I'm sorry, five hundred would be plenty enough. Of course, we didn't have any at all, you know, so five hundred dollars was very helpful back in the day, so just to let you know what a previous Council had thought at one time, in that regards, and your analysis was very well articulated.
Yeah, it's not so much the amount as it is the jump. You're going from five hundred to five thousand. That's what people are gonna look at, the jump. Okay, now you?
So just to clarify, these transfers are within one section, so let's say administration needs to move some money from training to supplies.
Yes.
That's just within a...
Fund.
A fund that we've already approved when we approved the budget. That being said, I still think that there's a perception when we pass something like this, so I do understand a smaller amount. I'm willing to increase it, but I think that my, my opinion would be closer to the three thousand dollar range, just because I'm not sure everyone would understand exactly that piece of the fact that those funds are being transferred within a fund, because money is confusing, and that's, that's where I stand.
Judy?
I'm comfortable up to five, based on Mrs. Wood's explanation, and I think if we needed to explain that to someone, we could use that explanation, compare nineteen ninety-eight prices to twenty twenty-three prices, and describe the difference. I'm also not gonna, you know, if someone's going to be, wishes to amend, I'm amenable to that as well, but I'm, I'm comfortable where we're at, five.
Mr. Hillier?
I asked Terry about this, and Terry gave me his tickle, well, it really doesn't matter. So that helped a whole lot. I had said before, I... Listening to Amber's analogy is probably a pretty good one. I, I had mentioned before, three thousand dollars, I think that's a good number, you can, you can bring us back, you know, to the next council next year and change it again, if that's what you'd like to do. Keep that in mind. I taught, I asked Terry, I said, does this save you a lot of time, and the answer was yes, probably no.
What's involved is the writing the legislation, I mean, doing the transaction is very minimal, it doesn't take much time.
And being inside of what Terry calls one checkbook?
Yes.
That it doesn't go out of that checkbook, it's just moving around that checkbook, but I would like to see it, if we can agree at three thousand, I think it'd be fine.
Thank you. And I, for, for my closing on this, Mrs. Seville, I concur with what I'm hearing from the Council, three would be a reasonable number to work with. I think that would help assist us, and it would help assist the Council in the diminishing amount of legislation that you would need to do. So that's, that's very acceptable on behalf of my office.
Oh, my. Okay.
It would just require you do an amendment to the legislation, though.
Well, but actually, there's one, two, three, four, five.
I'm not gonna vote no, whether someone amends it.
One, two, three, four, three.
I'm gonna vote yes, whether it's three or five.
If you make the amendment, you need, you know, four votes for the amendment to go through, if it didn't go through, that's at five.
Yes, I was gonna say, but basically, there's four of them, one and five.
However it's amended, away from five hundred, I, I'll, I'll go along with it. If you think the five thousand is too much, I'm, I'm not saying right or wrong, but we equally all agree that, you know, there has to be some kind of raise, so if you wanted to take it to three thousand, you know, or whatever you decide to take it to, I'm, I'm not gonna say no.
Okay, I would like to amend.
No, 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 you'll do that.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
We're not that far yet.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll get there eventually.
Seems like we've been here long enough. Okay, so did you, that's all we're going to talk about there, we can't go on and talk about, can we talk about what we did on Saturday or not? We can't.
You keep talking as far as I care, because my people aren't here yet.
Yeah.
We could take a break for fifteen minutes before we have a...
I have a question on, on Saturday, we spent two hours going through capital, but I don't see that in the legislation, where, how do we know that, where is that? In Fund four oh one and four oh five, the numbers appear on four oh one and four oh five. It doesn't specify the things we've talked about, it's just... That's a worksheet. It's just a dollar amount. Yes. In each one of those categories, so it's in, it's in your appropriations. Yes. But it's not as specific as what we discussed. That's correct.
So the line item like for the Brick Streets?
You'll see, you should see the two oh five.
It wasn't as easy to see as I saw Saturday, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, and I was pointing it out for you and helping out on that. Yes, so can you say, yeah, in your worksheets, I'll show you when we get to the section four oh ones and the sections of four oh five, and that'll help assist you with your worksheets that we use... And that'll help assist you with your worksheets that we used on Saturday. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Any other questions? We are going to adjourn that committee. We're recessed now until 6:15. While we go back and Janice.
I think my settings changed all the time.
It's now 6:15. Mr. Halyer.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Um, council, I told you we were gonna have a presentation tonight. Um, we have two gentlemen with Breckler, excuse me, Bricker and Eckler attorneys. We have with us right now, Michael Ringel and Caleb Bell will be joining us in a minute. Of course, that's Mr. Gottke at the podium.
Two gentlemen and then just Jeff's here.
This is Mr. Gottke, by the way.
Oh, that's fair. We are formal tonight.
Jeff's gonna get us started and the one gentleman's a little behind. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, thanks for the invite and allowing us kind of this extended time to talk about, a new tool. We've done this before with PACE, right? Where we kind of brought you, hey, we've got this idea for a new tool that we think would be valuable, arrow in our economic development quiver, particularly in light of all of the housing development that's been announced and probably more to come. So you can kind of think of it a little bit like PACE where there's kind of two things. One is create the tool and then as projects occur, we can add them to the tool or we can use the tool on them, right? So tonight, we're not necessarily talking about any particular development project. More of just this kind of overarching idea, concept of creating a new community authority. These are things that we've been talking about in the office and with administration for quite some time about valuable, valuable tools for economic development. And I think now is really a good time to start having that discussion seriously, particularly with, in light of the, the new housing developments. One of the things that, probably the biggest thing that I've heard you all say over the last couple of months as we hear about these developments, and it comes mostly from Mike, is regarding who's gonna pay for any infrastructure improvements that are gonna be needed in order to accommodate growth. So these new community authorities are probably the best way to do that within the economic development ecosystem. So kind of keep that in mind as you're listening tonight is this is a way that we can accommodate for all of those increased infrastructure costs that we're gonna have based on new housing developments. So I think I've delayed long enough so Caleb could get here. A fine Mauro County lad, by the way. So I'm gonna let him speak. We engage, actually you all engaged Bricker and Eckler to do all this stuff for you. So they're gonna present and then they'll also do all the backend kind of legal work, working with Rob to get all that done. So it's kind of a comprehensive, short-term engagement that we have with them because, you know, Bricker's tops in the economic development legal field. So we're glad they're here and Caleb has helped us before with the enterprise zone agreement for the senior living facility as well. So he's familiar with some of the, the things that we're up to here in Knox County as well. So I'll let you guys take over from here. Thank you.
Before you start, I guess the one thing I didn't say is we're gonna try to wind this up by 7:15. If not earlier, if you could. Thank you.
No worries. And can someone has control? You've got control. All right. Very good. Well, nice to see you all. Thanks for the opportunity to come and present. Thank you, Jeff. So what we wanted to talk about today was the new community authority tool and really how to deploy it here in the city. New community authorities are an interesting tool. It started as a county tool, a tool that was available to counties only. And it was really for creating brand-new communities, brand-new cities out of nothing, out of farmland. Over the years, the tool got used by a number of communities, particularly New Albany. They started to use the tool in the, in the 90s. And over the years, the General Assembly broadened it, twisted it, and really made it available for municipalities in a way that a lot of communities are, are, are taking advantage of. There are a number of community authorities deployed in central Ohio that are driven by municipalities, just like you guys. So what is this tool? It's a separate governmental entity. It's an entity that council can create. And that separate governmental entity has, within its powers, development power. It can put in infrastructure, can acquire land, can do all the things that you might think of to, you know, create a proper development, including finance and pay for those items with special taxes that are in the development area only. And that combination of powers is really what makes this tool very special. It is something that a lot of, again, communities that are experiencing growth particularly are, are, are using. The reason that communities that are experiencing growth use this tool is because it's a way to get a different or additional revenue stream from new development that doesn't burden the existing community. So if you think about it, brand-new home comes into town, brand-new development comes into town, and you can create a revenue stream based on the impact of that development that isn't charged against all of the existing community that have already invested in, in, in Mount Vernon. So, um, so anyway, that's, that's kind of the overview. Couple notes, let's see here. I'm gonna flip to the next one. How do you make an NCA? How do you, how do you form one? Well, a developer under the statute files a petition with city council. That's, that's the basic process. Now, who can be the developer? Interestingly, a number of municipalities themselves have taken on that role to do direct development within their community. Municipalities like Galena, Ohio, like Hilliard, Ohio, have done this where the municipality directly forms the NCA by sponsoring it essentially. Historically, developers would do this. They would come in and they'd say, I need X, Y, and Z. I have these issues. City, will you approve my development plan? That works for a single development, but it's not a good holistic thing for your community. That may work for one, but really what the, the policy idea here is, is to accommodate one entity that, that basically takes in all development activity that you may face. A board gets formed. So council, you, you all have, you know, a lot of familiarity with appointing boards and commissions and that's kind of how this would go. A, a community authority board is created. Council has the authority under the statute to directly appoint the entire board.
Which, which provision of the revised code does that come out of?
It's in Ohio Revised Code 34904.
34904 only talks about electing them.
34904 contains a provision that states that council may pursue alternative methods of selection or election. So what is done is an alternative method is, is selected, is chosen for selection of board members instead of election. And that's a newer provision of the, of the code. But anyway, what folks like Galena do is they just appoint the entirety of the board and then continue to perpetuate the board with appointees. So it might be the case that you wanna pick a developer or that you wanna pick somebody who's a banker or somebody who's got development interests in mind for your board. That's totally fine. The NCA, what can it do? Well, kind of the most important thing here, the, the most important concept is this tool creates a opportunity for the, for the city to target new development or, or undeveloped areas that are going to develop and put a special charge or assessment on those properties only. That's kind of the, the key tool here. And what that does is it creates an independent revenue stream that comes from just new development. That's helpful to you all because you all run a general government. You run a general purpose government. You have a lot of, of costs that you have to manage. And when you have supplemental revenue streams like that, you can help offset the impact of new development on your existing systems. Even things like your sewer system, your water system, your police, your fire, your, your roads. So that additional revenue stream is typically manifested as what we call a community development charge, but it's basically an assessment. If you ever think of like a sidewalk assessment that you may have that's put up against your house or maybe a lighting assessment, it's the same concept. An assessment is a property tax item that is charged against an individual lot and it's at a particular rate or term. So it could be a millage-based assessment. You might consider three mils or five mils of property tax assessment against every individual lot. You could do $500 per lot. The community authority in Granville, Ohio does that. So a little bit of flexibility about how you determine what this assessment is, but that creates the revenue stream. So you might imagine 200 lots get developed on the outskirts of town. That's a single-family residential and every one of those lots gets a millage-based assessment. That's certified by the community development authority, by, by the NCA, to the county for the county auditor to charge it against the property and collect it, just like a sidewalk assessment might be collected. So that, that creates a very strong and positive mechanism to collect a, a revenue from, again, new, new development only. NCAs can do, by the way, they can do things like income tax charges. You kind of wanna stay away from them, I think, in the municipal context. There's no reason to like double tax your citizens for income. That happens a little bit more in the industrial setting. So like if you had a manufacturing facility, it might be the case that you wanna consider an income tax, but that's not really what we would, we would recommend here. If you wanna flip to NCAs with multiple charges, you can, typically, an NCA is actually, historically, it's been deployed for projects. If you think of project areas that you might have encountered over the years, like imagine Easton Town Center in Columbus or imagine Bridge Park in Dublin. Those are areas where NCAs have been deployed in kind of a project setting. This, what we're suggesting is not really that. What we're suggesting is more the Galena model, which is as new property is coming online and being added to the community either through annexation or, or development, that you then use this mechanism to kind of manage that. Go ahead and take the next one. What do you use this money for? Community charges can be used for community facilities. That's things like actual assets. Think of infrastructure, sewer lines, water lines, stormwater management, roads, of course. Also land acquisition. So sometimes you have to like acquire the ground to get the right-of-way or the curb cut or the lane expansion. And so the NCA money can be used for that purpose. And then ultimately, NCA money can be used to either directly pay for the assets that you need to buy or you can bond it out and, and pay for a lot of stuff right now, but borrowing against this future revenue stream. This kind of makes sense if you think about it. If you think about a single-family home development of 200 homes, those homes are gonna be developed and then people are gonna live in them for a very long time. And what you might see is 10 years of community charge or 20 years of community charge. The financial professionals, ourselves included, we can model out how much revenue that produces. And then what you do is you borrow against it and you pay for your asset upfront. So you might need $5 million of sewer or water right now. But if you take a little bit of community charge on each lot and you do that for a period of time, 10 years or 20 years, you can actually afford all 5 million right now. So that's, that's the idea. It's, it's kind of like a financing mechanism in that respect. Examples of community facilities, lots of different ways to do this. You know, everything from true public, like even like a, like a city hall to private, quasi-private items like rec centers. There's a community authority in Grove City that has a fitness facility and a pool and all the people who live in that area can use that fitness facility. So, so that's, that's kind of the, the, the theory here. But very importantly and certainly for, for a municipal NCA, streets, sewer, water, contributions toward sewer costs or contributions toward a wa- a water tower or water line. That's kind of the way that this mechanism ends up being used when a municipality is driving the bus. Go ahead. Again, I mentioned traditional NCAs were really big. They were 1,000 acres. Delaware County had two or three of them that were like that, that had 1,000 acres altogether. The law changed and allowed for NCAs to be any property within a municipality. So even one parcel. There are a couple NCAs in Columbus that are just on one single parcel, believe it or not. So a lot of flexibility. What it means for you all is you can really target what areas are coming online and put this tool only on those areas. You can be very specific about that. Now, when we say we're gonna use the tool for new developing areas, you do have to have this kind of conversation with the developers, right? They have to consent to and allow the NCA tool to be brought in on their property. Fundamentally, they're developing, they own the ground or they get an option to develop the ground and they have kind of the property rights there. So how does the municipality make that exchange? Well, if you think about it, a lot of developers, they're gonna come to you all for a number of things. For zoning, for infrastructure needs, for cost sharing, for extraordinary items. That's where in that conversation, you really say, look, our policy here is to manage our growth by putting a small community charge on new lots. And if you want to have X, Y, and Z consents and permission from us to do these things, we're gonna require you to use the NCA tool. It's kind of that quid pro quo between the public sector and, and the interests of the public, but then also like the developers who control the ground. So once you get that kind of conceptual agreement in place, you move forward and, and, and use the, the NCA tool, add their property into your NCA. I talked a little bit about site-specific NCAs. That's where, you know, you get really, really, really specific. But again, what we're thinking about here is not an NCA just for one development, but a, a tool that can be used for every single development to create, you know, a nice revenue stream available to the city for, for more general purposes. I mentioned Galena several times. I wanna show you the Galena map. If you've been down there, you know, Galena kind of comes together at a point of a couple spots of water. And off to the east, kind of more towards Licken County, lots and lots of farm ground out there. And Galena, what they're doing is they're developing their sewer system. So they're using the NCA tool to create contributions, revenues, from each one of those developments that are in the farm areas. And as those properties annex into, into Galena, the city is saying, look, when you come in, we need you to join the NCA so that we can create a revenue stream to fund the sewer that is needed to properly develop your area. So that, that quid pro quo is pretty obvious. The, the, the folks who develop property see it and they understand why, why it happens. And Mike, my colleague, is a Delaware County guy, former county treasurer in Delaware County, and he's seen a lot of NCAs as well. And Mike, there's probably 20, 25 NCAs? Yeah, so I mean, there's really a lot of NCAs in the Delaware County space. So you can see that, you know, as that type of home development starts to hit the, you know, Knox and Mauro and Licken County areas, that you're gonna see this, this type of tool happen a little bit more. Mayor, one more, please. So proposal, what's, what is the idea here? The notion here would be a citywide community authority that's appointed by and controlled by council. We usually see them as a seven-member board. And then there would be a minimum amount of millage that would apply to all new development. So all new, you can think of it as single-family residential development. And then put commercial off to the side for just a second. But if you imagine all new, single-family residential development having a single agreed-upon minimum amount of charge. That could be two mils, that could be four mils, it could be five mils. But you all would, would decide that by policy. And then what happens is that millage becomes essentially unvoted revenue available to the city to, to work with the community authority and deploy for different costs. We also see a lot of times developments that occur not with just one property type, not just single-family, but also multifamily apartments. We see mixed-use development. And it's important to remember that those types of properties, they're taxed differently. Commercial taxation rates apply to apartments and apply to, you know, obviously buildings like, you know, retail or commercial buildings. And so the way the NCA tool starts to work over there in the commercial side is instead of just some single dollar amount or sing- single millage rate that applies to all lots, you tend to see more direct deal-making where a developer who is working on a multifamily building says, hey, I have financing, my property can bear this much in community charge. I'm willing to put that much in because I need that much in infrastructure. And you see that more on a discreet basis versus the policy of one type of millage for all residential over on the residential side. Commercial's just financed differently and it works differently. And it's more sensitive to valuation issues. So you see individual deals occur on the commercial side. Residential, much more common to just have a single millage rate apply across the whole, across the whole jurisdiction.
To ask you a quick question.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So if I understand you correctly, one of the things we're hearing, like Rockford Homes, it's all apartments. And we're hearing, you know, we need more apartments than we need houses. So if council was gonna look at this as a, something we might wanna look into that we may wanna do, I would assume we'd wanna look at both commercial and res- and single-family.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. The mechanism is, is available for both sides. I'm just suggesting that it does tend to be analyzed a little differently on the commercial side because that property is much more sensitive to valuation issues. A bank is gonna look at the NOI, the operating income, based on how much that millage is and they're gonna look at the whole value and they're gonna say the value of this building is less or more based on the property taxes. That doesn't happen as much on the residential side.
And just to reiterate, just so people that are listening to this, this is on new builds only. The current tax that I pay living here or you pay living here would not be touched. It's new properties coming in only.
So that brings up a question for me. So literally could conceivably be across the street, new development, my side of the street, old development. The people across the street, the new development, gonna be paying, is this in perpetuity? Or is there some kind of sunset clause on this to where they'd come back under the regular city income tax?
Yeah, it's a great question. Typically, we see a, a defined period of years for a community charge millage like this. Like you might see, there are several in Sunbury that are 20 years. That's 20 years per lot.
So after 20 years, then this NCA dissolves and they've just become part of the city? Or how does that process work?
Because it's a policy that applies as properties roll on, what the most likely scenario is, a lot, that's an early lot, ends up falling off. But the entity continues on because maybe five or 10 years in, a new development came on and it goes for 20 years. So it's possible that at some point in the future, it all completely dissolves because everybody's bought in and you never wanna develop anything. But the reality is, it's likely that continued growth will occur. Infits and starts throughout the years. If you use this type of policy, this entity may be around for a long time, but it'll roll off individual lots based on a schedule that's agree upon.
I have a question.
Yes.
We get our revenue from residents moving in and, and also from utility costs for those people. So is there any hindrance to a developer or to a buyer knowing they're gonna have to pay this on one side of it? And the other side, is there any advantage to them knowing that these things are gonna be provided? You know, so what's, what, make it a win-win situation?
Yeah, of course. That's a great question and a good observation. I, I'll start with the experience part. Based on our experience from what we've seen in Delaware County and in Franklin County, it hasn't been a hindrance. It's not blocked people from buying a lot or freely transferring a lot within a development that's got a community charge. What we see is that developments that are supported by community charges tend to have slightly higher or better amenity packages or better infrastructure surrounding those, those developments. So you might see, you might consider a township road on the outside of town having very little, you know, aesthetic and feel to it, no sidewalks, nothing. And then you might imagine that same property but developing with a properly constructed road with sidewalks and walking trails that creates an amenity that is of better quality. That's the type of feel that you get when you have the revenue to be able to do that extra. And so that's, that's kind of the, the exchange that I think you see. And, and I think we see it across Delaware County is like the example around here because there's just so many community authorities there. But it has not been a hindrance to that market. And, you know, it's, it, it's all market-driven, right? You know, what are people willing to pay for, for their home? Are they interested in buying up into an area that's got a little bit more? Or are they interested in, you know, maybe buying an existing home and renovating that instead? So there's lots, lots of choices.
Yeah, of course. Anticipating that question, I spoke to some realtors, kind of outlined this generally and we did a little back-of-the-napkin math about, all right, if this is my home value and we went through certain millages, you know, two, four, five, six, like we were talking about, said, okay, would this hurt, do you think this would hurt the market? Would this hurt your ability to sell or people's desire to buy? No. But that's the needle we have to thread is what's that assessment gonna be? And how do we maximize that without hurting the market? But I didn't hear any negative feedback from any of the realtors about an extra assessment hurting demand.
There's a, a fair bit of variation amongst the communities that have used the community authority program about how much they put on individual lots. I've seen it as small as $450 a lot and I've seen it as large as 10 and 1/4 mils of property tax. So you can imagine the variation of those two extremes. I would tell you that for the most part, if you're gonna do a policy that, that essentially is monitoring all new residential, you might pick a lower number that's the minimum amount. But then if that development or developer needs additional funding, they can make the choice to add millage above the minimum that you all set. That way, if they wanna make it an amenity-driven development or if they want to do more, that's a flexibility that can happen. In other words, you'd hit the minimum of four mils, but if they wanna add two more or five more in order to do more, that's a possibility. Subject to your judgment about whatever the maximum that you'd feel is appropriate is.
Maybe I'm wrong. When we originally sat down, didn't you not say with this millage, it could be divided off somewhat for the schools as well?
No, that's, that's a great, that's a great note. You are correct. That does occur. And there are several NCAs that have made it a part of the policy to help the schools by offsetting the impact of single-family residential and the impact on schools with some dedicated millage. Again, how, how do the schools raise money? They go to the ballot and they ask over and over again. And you don't wanna wear out the ballot if you're, if you're the school administration. What the NCA policy does allow is the use of community charges to pay for educational facilities or educational services. And so there's several examples, councilman, of, of NCAs that are dedicating maybe two mils over to the schools or four mils over to the schools specifically to offset the school's impact of just more kids. And, and that's been, you know, something that is negotiated or really mathed out is the right answer. The, the, the schools look at the per pupil expenditure and then the growth area and they try to do some math and say, this is about where, where we're at. We could really use this much in order to offset that wave. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, so I, I made a couple, I, I put together a mo- a couple of different models. I'm just got, I've got the summary information here. But this slide shows, you know, kind of a, a model based on a few assumptions. Basically, mid, mid-property value, mid, mid, mid-value for a couple different developments, possibly by Rockford Homes and Highland Real Estate Group. These would include some mixture of property types, single-family, but also things like condos and multifamily. And then we use for purposes of this model 30 years. That's a choice. It could be 20 years, it could be 10, it could be 40. And then we did in this model assume that the NCA millage would apply whether it was commercial or residential. And also assumed that would take a little while to get things up and running. If you see the results there, this is a good example of the power of the time value of all that time of 30 years to gather up revenue. Two mils of, of property tax, it, within the community authority area only, you'd have about a million five coming out of the Rockford site. You'd have about two-two coming out of the Highland site. You'd have about $3.7 million of collections. That's on two mils. If you went to the other side of the spectrum and did six mils, it'd be $11 million of collection. And so you have to think about that as $11 million that's over 30 years. So the present value of that would be, oh, something around probably four or $5 million. You could fund four or $5 million. You could fund four or $5 million of assets today, put that in the ground, and then take that revenue stream over time and repay your lender. It's just like our own mortgage, right? If we take out a mortgage for a $250,000 house, we pay $700,000 at the end of the day when we do 30 years and all the interest. Same concept. So, so $11 million of collections would be the estimate for six mils just on two, on two developments. You could imagine the power of doing that across three or four or five developments and then managing it. So that, that's really the, the idea here.
I'm looking at timing. Rockford's already started, right? So can they retroactively have this? What, what's the timing on when they can do that? And also with Highland?
Yep.
Since they've already in that process, how's that work as far as retroactively having a charge?
So the, as long as the property remains under control of the developer, it's not too late at all. So sometimes we see the developer come together, they start to put their package together of all the things that they need, and they find that they have an infrastructure need. And that infrastructure need is sometimes one of the later things to kind of get solved. And they may say, look, we need to put in equity or we need to borrow more from our bank in order to be able to buy our, our lots, get our roads in, do all the things we need to do. So until the deal is really set and all of those items are paid for, it's not too late. Another way practically to think about it is, I am working on one in Delaware County right now that the, the stakes are all out on the lots. No buildings have gone up, but all the base infrastructure is in place. But no lots have transferred to private homeowners yet because nothing's been built. That property is going through the process of being added to a community authority right now because the charge won't really kick in until a home is built and then it's assessed by the county auditor. So if you think about that, it's really actually quite a while until a home, it's brand new, gets assessed by the county auditor. So you have up until that time really to, to do this. And I think you'll find that the development community, they will need resources to do some of the things that are required of them to properly develop. They're going to need sewer and water extensions, and those things are expensive. So until all those pieces kind of get set, you do have an opportunity, even though they may be somewhere along the way in the process of zoning or development. Yeah.
Caleb, I may have heard something wrong. I, I thought this was only on homes and not apartments, like Rockford, Rockford will be all apartments.
Yeah, so it can be on both types. And that's a policy choice about how you deal with it.
Okay.
My recommendation to you would be do a single uniform charge on all single-family lots, but then with anything that is multifamily, tax discommercial, anything like senior living, anything like that, that you do an individual arrangement that's appropriate for that type because the financing scheme is so different for the, the developer.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mr. Rautke, you brought this as a proposed revenue stream. I'm assuming you see it, you see a need, but what would we be using as revenue stream? What are, what are you seeing?
Well, I think it's a lot of the stuff that you talk about whenever there's developments that show up, right? So it's like traffic mitigation, right? If there's road improvements that need to be made. And it's important to note about these that compared to a TIF, right? TIF money, you can pretty much only use within the defined area, right? And community authority money, you can use outside of that defined area anywhere, right? As long as it's kind of meant to accommodate growth. So this is a way to think a little more broadly outside of this one particular area about what those projects would be. So that would be road projects, sewer, you know, water plant improvements or upgrades.
Offsets to all those things, right?
Correct.
That's what we end up doing most practically is we say, look, your share of that additional cost might be X. Let's use the community millage to pay that share.
That's right. So it's stuff that you, that we talk about all the time that's meant to accommodate growth.
So what we're going through at the water wastewater plant right now, if we had this in place, those dollars could?
Is it, if, yeah, you want to kind of separate maintenance things from expansion, you know, projects meant to accommodate.
To be only an expansion type.
Right. So like when we talk to the schools, it's like not, not so much to buy more debt or to replace the desks they have, but it might be to buy more desks because there's just more students enrolled.
Which if we keep on developing, 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 we've got to upgrade.
And I spoke with the superintendent and the treasurer about all this and what their needs might be. So if that's, if you want to build that into the policy, millage going to the schools, like we've already had those conversations. So they're aware and they have some idea. Amber's raised her hand three times.
Thanks. So essentially, let's look at those developments that are coming down 13 or on 586. We've already said that in the future, we need a fire station out that way. And this will definitely push us in that, that direction. Are, are these funds that can go towards a new facility in that area?
Yeah, that would be a common use of the charge. Again, a kind of incremental or additional need is identified. Buildings are, you know, expensive and also long-term assets themselves, but it kind of aligns with this long-term revenue that, that happens so that the new pay for the new, you kind of get that alignment when you do this.
Thank you.
Hey, yes, you.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Rolling back a little bit, the paperwork here says that city council controls through appointing the board.
Yes.
And then the board is appointed, it says here, is appointed by developer, county, local government until certain population levels are met. After those population levels are met, what happens then?
So the statute sets up, remember, the statute's been tinkered with a lot. So it sets up a policy of, originally, it, it was designed to have a private developer and a county come together to set up, you know, a new, brand-new development in the field like New Albany, right? And so that is the basic of the statute. So there's some defaults in the statute. If nobody makes any other choices, the way the statute works, the population number is decided for the area that's in the community authority. And when you hit that population, as you, as you get to that population, as you build out, the appointed original members get replaced by elected folks from within that area. That's the way the statute is set up without making any choices. What's most common in municipal-driven NCAs is to affirmatively choose out of that and to instead make it more like a commission or board of the city council where you all directly appoint the entirety of the board. That is available if you elect it when you form the community authority. So it's just, it's a choice, but the statutory default has that election system, which is complex and kind of not appropriate when you are looking at a community-wide thing here.
It seems like it would almost be a competing.
With, yes, that's right. And Powell is a good example of a community that has had community authority, board members, you know, do the local election, and then some of them start to swap onto council. And that, that whole situation, you can affirmatively choose out of by doing a selection process for your board instead of elections and just bake that in for the whole life of the NCA.
And so then does that board decide what the millage will be, what it will be used for, works with the developers?
Good question. No. It's all driven by the city's policy and the formation. So the city sets up the charter essentially. It's called a petition, but when you all approve it, you're approving some parameters for the ability of individual charges to apply to individual lots. So you kind of set up this kind of maybe a maximum, right? Like something like, we'll never have a community charge more than 10 mils. We'll always have a minimum charge of four mils for residential. Commercial would be flexible. And that, and you set that up as like the charter or the policy. And then that enables the NCA board to deal with the developers directly. But that whole policy parameter is driven by you all. It's driven by council. Also, there would be an agreement between the NCA and the city, and that enables the use of funds for any city purposes. We talked about maybe moving some money to the schools as well. There'd be an agreement that direction. If you wanted to go and spend NCA money for the school district, you'd have an agreement over there too. So those are a couple of ways in which the city contains, contains this and keeps control of it through the formation, through the parameters of the charge, through agreements that deal with money.
So I, sorry, another question. If we're having this conversation and having the conversation of part of it going to the school, has, has this all gone to our school people as well? So that they're not?
I've spoken with the superintendent and treasurer. They're aware of this. Depending on the outcome of this meeting, then Mr. Cedar would probably have the same concern. His, what that theme is might look.
Okay. Because I know that that was a situation with the CRA and I just wanted to make sure everybody was getting all the information.
There's one note I want to make about schools and the NCA world. Schools generally perceive this tool as agnostic or beneficial to them because this is additional millage. It's not diverting anything or taking anything away like some of our other common development tools do. So in this respect, the schools don't have a notice or a veto, but smart communities have that conversation with their school district to kind of align their policy.
I'm going to ask a dumb question. I just paid my taxes and I looked at how much I owed, compared it to how much I paid last time, and I really couldn't tell you what kind of millage I even paid.
Yep.
And maybe Terry could answer this better. We hear a lot about the proposed housing going in as, let's use it just to round a number, they say, let's say $300,000. What does two mil do to that and a six-month tax? Do you have any clue, Terry? I don't even know how to even figure it.
Depends on what's on the county auditor.
I'm sorry?
It depends on what the county auditor has as valuation property.
I know it's based on the evaluation.
Yeah, so a $300,000 home would be taxed 35%. That's $105,000 of actual value, you know, value. And, and then you said two mils?
Just using a number, two mils on top?
Hmm? Yeah, it'd be 210 bucks, right? Yeah, it's 210 bucks per mil.
Per half.
For two mils. So it'd be 105 bucks a half.
And the thing with it is, when we had this conversation, it's not something, when you go buy a house, you have, this is the value of the house I'm trying to buy, this is, and this is what the taxes are on the house. So it's already there when they, it's not something that, oh, by the way, you have to pay this additional, such as like an HOA. It is on their tax.
Yep.
It's in front of them, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So it's nothing they're going to find out secondhand. It's there when they buy the house, this is the, the dollar amount, this is what the taxes are. So it's no secret.
This, this is another dumb question, Mike. So let's say, so first of all, who helps a city? Who helps us figure out what mils to set and, and the length of the years? I mean, there's probably a lot of, maybe that's your company.
It's partly, it's partly our job to assist you through those choices from a legal perspective. I will tell you, councilman, that it's common to involve like the city's financial advisor. Imagine the folks who help you with your bond deals. Your financial advisor is typically a professional who has a view of this type of market and can help advise alongside legal and, you know, the economic development community. That's another part of the job is just really to take those data points in. We have a lot of data on NCAs from Delaware County. So it's all out there. We just need to extrapolate a little bit about what it is that you want it to look like here to get you the right, to get you the right answers.
And then the second question alone with that would be, let's say we get into something for five or 10 years and we want to change the millage. Does the board have the ability to change the millage or is that something that has to come back to council to vote?
It cannot go up.
Generally don't.
It cannot go up. You can take it down.
Okay.
And that's a due process issue. If we burden someone's property with this promise that they'll pay five mils, we can't go back to them and impose six mils because that would be a due process or takings issue. So this bore itself out in New Albany. New Albany started with nine mils of property tax. And then as the valuation went up, they dropped their nine mils down to like three and a quarter because all they needed for all the things that they needed was that lower amount. So over the long time, you could imagine it dropping, and that's usually been the trend.
So maybe, just thinking out loud here, err on having it a little bit higher than what you might want originally. I don't know. And then maybe with that idea to maybe bring it down.
You wave it down or you reduce it. And individual projects could have a different millage or additional millage on top of it. Yes, correct. Depending on, say, the traffic setup that we would need for realigning the roads in front of the development.
So if I understand it, that was kind of my question. And there, by the way, there's no dumb questions, just questions make him smarter. But let's say we, we set this at two mil. I'm just using numbers.
Sure.
And we set it for 20 years. But we have another developer that comes and wants to develop annex in Harcourt Road and develop out there. Can we not start a new authority with a different millage for a different development? Or is it all?
It's, it's entirely possible to have multiple community authorities.
You just said Delaware had.
There are many, yeah. Hilliard has, I think, four or five different ones. But what happened was they finally got themselves on to what we're suggesting here, which is just one that handles all of it. Instead of, instead of having the development community say, oh, you know, I want to do mine, you guys go do that over there. Because what happens is, it takes city staff and resources to man these things and to, and to run them correctly. So instead of having five, start with one and do it well, and then you'll have one the whole time.
And then when you're at a point, I'd like to hear from Terry Scott, because I know Terry was in these meetings as well. Any input, Terry? I'm sure you do.
Yeah. Yes, we did have, met with Jeff last week on this same topic, went through the same analysis, a little bit more in detail for this. I do see it as being a very win-win on this. I think Mel, you were talking about that, and Bruce, you're talking about win-win here. Because where does the burden lie in the development of itself? So the rest of us who have been here in the community for, for quite some time, we don't, we don't get burdened with that. And so the offset is, is going to be a benefit there as well. It's, while we don't want to combine it and think of it as a TIF, because that's a whole different story. It has a lifeline that's going to, going to end at some point. And again, has very strict restrictions on it as well. This is a more open-ended and has a lot more abilities for providing services well beyond what we already can think of right now. So, yeah, I, once I saw it and got a good explanation of it last week, it, it did make good sense, I think, in regards.
I think when we're talking fire department, east end of town, police station, Sycor Road, those two things right there. And we're looking at, you know, I've heard, boy, it's a lot of money. There again, why should that person on Sycor Road be hit for the total cost of that police department because of development? I think this is a good tool.
The police department may not.
Let's just pick the fire department, maybe I spoke out loud.
The fire department, very definitely is the expansion of the fire department.
Who would determine it? Okay, he's saying he does, and I'm not for argumental purposes, is that what your company does?
So, you know, this is, this is where good lawyers get together and figure out what's the proper public purpose for what you want to do. Part of it is driven by what do you want to do? What's your policy? What are your highest needs? But it's a careful interpretation of the statutes, just like the, you know, the auditor's office, look at the TIF statutes and say, you can use TIF for exactly this and not that. That analysis goes on with community authorities as well. There are specific definitions, community facilities, land acquisition, et cetera, that have to be followed. So what we do from a legal perspective is, you put that together and you say, what's the plan? What's the justification? Are you good with the justification? City approves it, community authority approves it, you have an agreement, and that is how you document from an audit perspective, the proper use.
All right. I've got a question for you that I just, I listened to a couple of things here from what council's talking about, what he's talking about. So when they're talking about building a fire station nearby a building, a police station, that, we're not.
Yeah, right.
Where, where, and if, does that play in, in that type?
Yeah, so you can use the community millage to pay for an asset that's municipal. That asset does in itself have to then go get burdened by the charge. So you can acquire land, acquire municipal buildings, you know, build municipal buildings. And those properties are automatically excluded. The community charge gets recorded on everybody's ground that's in the community authority, including any municipal ground. And that document's called a declaration of covenants. And what it says is, these properties get charged and these ones don't. And the very first exclusion is, anything owned by a government is excluded. So, you know, we don't charge a government property. But that recorded instrument helps also with this analysis of what's proper, what can be charged. But that recorded instrument helps also with this analysis of what's proper, what can be charged against the lots. That's how we, that's how we document the...
So let me do this. Council, we have 10 minutes left of this meeting. Tammy, do you have a question? I'm gonna go with some questions right now and maybe we can wind this up for the final. But Tammy, go ahead.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around the concept of unvoted millage, and I get that this implemented it.
We're talking to a CPA for a school.
I'm gonna create enemies in my line of work. I just don't feel the city has the right of being in the business raising funds for the school, personal thing. But I'm struggling with the perpetualness. So if we implement this city one for a purpose, fire department, but in 20 years, whatever we set that at, and now you need two things, and that isn't enough, just the concept of trying to wrap your heads around what to set it at now?
Yep. These are good questions, so a couple, couple waypoints for you to consider. First of all, the time period for the charge is determined by you all, so it can be perpetual, some are, but usually do.
Okay, so we set it up citywide and this development goes in and pays for 20 years and it helps offset that fire department. But we have this now citywide and two developments go in, and oh my lord, we need an even bigger one over here and it doesn't pay for it.
Yep, and here's where, here's the other, the other piece of all this is that every single development comes to city council to be approved, to be added to the community authority or not.
At a rate? I mean, we've already set the mils.
You've set up this general charter essentially for the community authority, but it's your all's choice to admit a property or not. So you can by discretion say, "This property is gonna develop in the middle of downtown, it doesn't need anything new, so it's not gonna go in the community authority." Those properties out on the, on the state routes, they need to go in the community authority. That's a discretionary choice that you make. So it doesn't have to be perpetual. You could say, "We're gonna do this for the next wave of development, and then six years from now, we're stopping."
And it goes on with the base charge, and then as approved, it can get approved with an additional charge above that if we find that those new developments need additional resource?
Say that one more time.
There's the base charge that council will set up, that every project that's admitted, that's admitted to the NCA will have. But when the individual projects come through, you can add millage on top of the base millage. If, and your example here, that it needs additional infrastructure, whatever, for that project. And so they can, you could add millage, or we could negotiate with the developer to add millage for that project specifically.
Or the developer could even negotiate additional because they want to provide an amenity-rich development.
That is correct.
No.
Caleb, I think this is what I heard, so let's just, let's just use the four mil example, they're 7.6 million. We basically can borrow that money to use right up front? Because we know it's coming in over the next 20 years.
Correct.
That's how this works.
Yes.
So you have more buying power right now?
Yes.
Because in 20 years, 7.6 is not 7.6 million.
That's correct. So what you're doing is you're bringing forward the time value of all that money to a present value, and you're borrowing that because you're gonna have to pay back 4 million plus interest, and that's really gonna cost seven over time. But that's, that's the finance piece of it. And that's where we and financial advisors can help you guys pick the right dollar amounts there. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's the power of that, that financing system that enables you to use this tool to get things done.
John?
I'm good.
Bruce?
I'm a little confused on infrastructure in order to improve the property value of the development versus the global concept of a fire department.
Yep.
Who makes the decision on how that money is spent and where it goes?
The state auditor's office reviews all of the choices that any fiscal officer that you guys have or an NCA has. All of those choices get reviewed. And what they'll tell you is, they'll follow the statute, and it says, "Community facilities mean these things, community services mean these things, et cetera." And so what you have to do is make a rational basis connection. You have to make a good nexus, a reasonable nexus between the thing that you're paying for with the money and a benefit to the property. That's the legal analysis that lawyers and auditors do. We would end up saying, if there's a brand-new fire station that's serving these developments, the fire station directly benefits those developments, ergo, you can pay for the cost of the fire station. It's irrelevant that the fire station can also serve somewhere else in town for that, for that analysis.
Yes?
You've done an excellent job. I don't have any other question.
Amber?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm not gonna let you off yet.
All right. Any more dumb que... I'm just kidding.
All right, so where we go from here?
Where you go from here? I think what you want to do is put together a plan for the formation of the NCA. That's really where this kind of charter concept that I was talking about really comes together. We want to think about the appropriate parameters of the community charge and also target not only an individual piece of property that can be used to form the NCA. Typically, that's a piece of municipal property that is not gonna have a charge on it, but it is property within the municipality. It's identified to start this process. And then you hook in a developer's property and you start doing the policy with it.
Who does that? Who does what you just said?
We do, I do. The law firm manages that process. We typically do that with your other folks, with your economic development team, with your financial advisor, with your fiscal officer. Those are the players that help craft this policy.
And the question's been asked, but I'll ask it again so it's on the record. We're paying for this through ADF, the fees that we pay ADF, is that correct? Who's paying you?
We, we will have to sign a contract with Bricker and Eckler to be the city's, to be the city's representative to create.
And then, so the fees?
It'll come out of... Mr. Scott and I will figure out which budget line item will come out of.
Because I'm sure somebody's gonna ask how much... I'll be the one to say it. Somebody's gonna ask, "How much does this cost us to do this?"
Sure, it's, it's a good question.
Listen, we want to make sure this is on record.
It's, it's a good question and a fair question. In our experience, to do this level of work, it's typically 20 to $25,000 worth of work to gather up the property information, to form the petition, to form the policy, and to manage it through the process of starting with developers. Then what we end up seeing is the developers come along and they need to access the tool so the city works with the developers to start offsetting that cost. Then what happens is when individual homes are paying, the city can get reimbursed for what it upfront, its upfront cost was. That's usually the way it rolls out.
Anything to that question? I don't have anything else. I guess, Jeff, you'll just have to keep this in the loop, or somebody?
I guess from what I'm hearing is it's something you keep exploring.
I don't hear anybody says, sitting here saying, "No, we don't want to do this at all." Tammy, I understand your questions? Um, but I haven't heard anybody else come up with an idea of why Sally Sue, that's been paying taxes for 50 years, should help improve these properties, or pay for the water and sewer going to them, or pay for the street improvement. And which Sally Sue will continue, but her chunk is not gonna be as big as the chunk of the guy living in a $300,000 house. That's the way I like to see it. That's as simple as I can make it.
Is there anything that prevents a TIF district being built on top of it?
No. TIFs are commonly used with NCAs because it's different. The millage is diverted with TIF, this is added, so sometimes you have to like pair them up. We do see a lot of non-school, old harmless residential TIFs with a little NCA millage on top to create that revenue for development.
And I have...
Yeah, the TIF can, can be helpful in the right circumstance.
And I have been watching our friend back here from Highland Real Estate and nodding a lot, so he does, this isn't all new to him, so...
No, we've talked to them quite a bit of it.
We're, we're in the thick of it. And we're doing it in several committees because they're forced. They're looking at this construction, telling me, every day, it's the first person. Don't have a way to tax it. And not burden this expense. This is simple and really, this is pretty... First is by a $350,000 house. It's not gonna front for five or $600 a half. We're gonna pitch. I would, you would, but we're gonna... And our tax rate is so low here, I don't know what is its under.
Yeah, let's hope we never get there. I understand what comes with that, but I also understand, let's take it a little bit of time. And the way we're doing it here is the best way to do it.
Well, then, with your eyes wide open, I understand it's awesome.
I guess X will come back.
Yeah. You did mention the county commissioners earlier. Is that...
No, we won't need to, we don't need the county commissioners.
That answers that question. Anybody else? Does our lawyer friend out there have anything to say? He's pretty quiet.
The only thing I'd like to add, the modeling that we do up front, it helps financing projects. But, kind of talking about property tax valuation, not only do the charges help pay for new growth themselves, but it also makes the neighborhoods more valuable. And over time, the value of the homes will increase when the auditor reassesses them most likely every three years, every six years. So you see that growth in value, which will also then feed back into the community authority and being able to have that additional revenue stream that you can use to pay for more projects that are a result of growth.
Anything else? Gentlemen, thank you. Have a safe trip.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
I adjourn my meeting.
We're adjourning, planning, and zoning. We're now in recess until 7:30 PM when we begin the legislative portion of this meeting.
You know that?
We are in session. The invocation this evening will be given by, um, Councilman Severns.
He said give you all this.
Place rise and invocation, remain standing for the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we do thank you for this time that we can be together. I just pray that you will give us wisdom as a city council. I pray for wisdom for our city leaders as well. May this time be productive tonight in, for the benefit of our citizens. That's what we want. We do pray for the protection of all of our safety forces. Mount Vernon, keep them safe. Again, thank you for this time that we can be together. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Our presentation is submitted by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, in your packets were the minutes from the January 9th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Now I'd ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. Mr. Hill, any petitions or communications?
There are none.
In your packet, council, were the minutes from the January 9th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Now I'd ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. Mr. Hill, any petitions or communications?
There are none.
In your packet, council, were the minutes from, from some committee meetings for your review. On the page here. And I see no liquor control licenses or proclamations or people wanting to speak on matters of city concern. So move now in the legislative portion of the meeting, council, in your packet is the agenda. There were two additions made today, uh, one this afternoon and one this evening. Uh, are there any additions or corrections to, to the agenda as presented? If not, I'll assume it's approved by consensus. And we'll move now into legislative portion of the meeting. And Mr. Hill asks that you release by title and number only this evening. And the first is resolution for third reading. It's resolution number 2022-133. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2022-133, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to release a request for qualifications for identifying and selecting a qualified firm or firms to provide services for the rehabilitation of clarifier number two at the city's water treatment plant, identify and enter into contract with these selected firm or firms for those services and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I moved to approve resolution 2022-133.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
So we had a really good, well, very brief actually, committee meeting earlier. Um, just to kind of prove some redundancy down in our water treatment plant. Brian, anything you want to add? I think we did a good job earlier. If you have any questions, not, thank you.
Mr. Hill. Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. We have no resolutions this evening for second reading. We have several for first reading. The first one is resolution number 2023-03. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-03, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the CDBG North Sandusky Street Sidewalk Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Do we want to move this to the third? Yes, I'd like to move this to the third and final reading this evening.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rolls. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution number 2023-03.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
I don't believe there's anything else to add. We did see the presentation earlier in the committee meeting. Uh, these are good projects for us and, uh, I, I, if there's any questions other than that, I believe we're ready to go.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution 2023-04. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-04, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the CDBG Catherine Street Reconstruction and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for resolution number 2023-04 and move it to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution number 2023-04.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
Mr. Hillier.
Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Date.
Uh, as soon as possible.
This will be done this year, correct?
We will start construction and endeavor to get it completed as, hopefully, by the end of the year. But we, with supply chain things, we cannot guarantee it. But I do have a small stash of water line already in our possession.
The goal is not to keep it as tore up as any longer we have to, but we will get started, hopefully, to completion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yeah.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution 2023-04. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-05. Mr. Hill. Resolution number 2023-05, a resolution approving the reappointment of Catherine Breckler to the Board of Property Maintenance Appeals of Mount Vernon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Mr. President, request suspension of the rules requiring three separate readings. Take resolution 2023-05 to a third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution number 2023-03.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
I don't believe there's anything else to add. We did see the presentation earlier in the committee meeting. Uh, these are good projects for us and, uh, I, I, if there's any questions other than that, I believe we're ready to go.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution 2023-04. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-04, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the CDBG Catherine Street Reconstruction and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for resolution number 2023-04 and move it to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. We have no resolutions this evening for second reading. We have several for first reading. The first one is resolution number 2023-03. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-03, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the CDBG North Sandusky Street Sidewalk Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Do we want to move this to the third? Yes, I'd like to move this to the third and final reading this evening.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution number 2023-03.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
I don't believe there's anything else to add. We did see the presentation earlier in the committee meeting. Uh, these are good projects for us and, uh, I, I, if there's any questions other than that, I believe we're ready to go.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution 2023-04. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-04, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the CDBG Catherine Street Reconstruction and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for resolution number 2023-04 and move it to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution number 2023-03.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
I don't believe there's anything else to add. We did see the presentation earlier in the committee meeting. Uh, these are good projects for us and, uh, I, I, if there's any questions other than that, I believe we're ready to go.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution 2023-04. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-04, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the CDBG Catherine Street Reconstruction and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for resolution number 2023-04 and move it to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution number 2023-04.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
Mr. Hillier.
Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Date.
Uh, as soon as possible.
This will be done this year, correct?
We will start construction and endeavor to get it completed as, hopefully, by the end of the year. But we, with supply chain things, we cannot guarantee it. But I do have a small stash of water line already in our possession.
The goal is not to keep it as tore up as any longer we have to, but we will get started, hopefully, to completion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yeah.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution 2023-04. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-04, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the CDBG Catherine Street Reconstruction and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for resolution number 2023-04 and move it to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution number 2023-04.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
Mr. Hillier.
Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Date.
Uh, as soon as possible.
This will be done this year, correct?
We will start construction and endeavor to get it completed as, hopefully, by the end of the year. But we, with supply chain things, we cannot guarantee it. But I do have a small stash of water line already in our possession.
The goal is not to keep it as tore up as any longer we have to, but we will get started, hopefully, to completion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yeah.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution 2023-05. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-05, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the CDBG Catherine Street Reconstruction and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for resolution number 2023-04 and move it to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution number 2023-03.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
I don't believe there's anything else to add. We did see the presentation earlier in the committee meeting. Uh, these are good projects for us and, uh, I, I, if there's any questions other than that, I believe we're ready to go.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution 2023-04. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-04, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the CDBG Catherine Street Reconstruction and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for resolution number 2023-04 and move it to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution number 2023-04. Second.
Been moved and seconded for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severns.
Mr. Hillier.
Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Date.
Uh, as soon as possible.
This will be done this year, correct?
We will start construction and endeavor to get it completed as, hopefully, by the end of the year. But we, with supply chain things, we cannot guarantee it. But I do have a small stash of water line already in our possession.
The goal is not to keep it as tore up as any longer we have to, but we will get started, hopefully, to completion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yeah.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution 2023-04. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-04, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the CDBG Catherine Street Reconstruction and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for resolution number 2023-04 and move it to its third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severns.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution number 2023-04. Second.
Been moved and seconded for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severance.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution number 2023 dash oh four.
Second.
And move in second for the adoption of this resolution and a discussion. Mr. Severance.
Mr. Hillier.
Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Date.
Uh, as soon as possible.
This will be done this year, correct?
We will start construction and endeavor to get it completed as hopefully by the end of the year, but we, with supply chain things, we cannot guarantee it. But I do have a small stash of water line already in our possession.
The goal is not to keep it as tore up as any longer we have to, but we will get started hopefully to completion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution 2023 dash oh five. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023 dash zero five, a resolution approving the reappointment of Catherine Breckler to the Board of Property Maintenance Appeals of Mount Vernon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Mr. President, uh, request suspension of the rules requiring three separate readings. Take Resolution 2023 oh five to its third and final reading.
Second. And move in second for suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Francis.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023 oh five.
Second. And move in second for the adoption of this resolution and a discussion. Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mayor, like to fill us in a little bit about, uh, Ms. Breckler.
Ms. Breckler is, uh, has been working for Canyon College for a number of years. She's the assistant to the President's office, handles a lot of the events and so forth. Uh, she's quite involved in the community, uh, in other areas such as the, uh, the gala benefiting Food for the Hungry for at Canyon College, lots of other different things. She is, uh, eager to be involved in the city's business and, uh, this is one of two bo- uh, two boards that she is helping us out with.
And the, and the other discussion. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution number 2023 dash oh six. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023 dash zero six, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Sibley Poland to the Historical Review Commission for a one-year term and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Request suspension of the rules requiring three separate readings. Take 2023 oh six to its third and final reading.
Second. And move in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mr. Francis.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023 oh six.
Second. And move in second for the adoption of this resolution and a discussion. Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mayor, how, how, how many years is, uh, Ms. Poland?
She's, uh, with the Historical Review Commission, she's only been on, uh, she only served a partial, um, uh, term, uh, and so it's her, her, this, it's just time for re-upping, but, uh, she is in, uh, she actually lives in the historic district as well, uh, is a real estate agent and, uh, is also a member of our Regional Planning Commission as well that we recently adopted. Uh, so, uh, she's again very, very involved in the community, likes to, uh, stay involved and, um, she's got a lot of knowledge when it comes to historical review, so we appreciate her, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution number 2023 day zero seven. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023 dash zero seven, a resolution confirming the mayor's reappointments of Anthony L. Smith, Lois Hansen, and Kristi Berson to the Library Board of Trustees and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Uh, request suspension of the rules requiring three separate readings. Take Resolution 2023 oh seven to its third and final reading.
Second. And move in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Francis.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023 oh seven.
Second. And move in second for the adoption of this resolution and a discussion. Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mayor, we'll just let you introduce, uh, how?
It's your show tonight, isn't it?
This is a library, this is a library committee. They, they meet how often?
They meet once a year.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, these three are, were anxious to continue their terms. They're having a good time right now. What this committee does, uh, counsel, is that they take a look at the endowment of, for the library fund and they decide how those, how that, that interest is to be allocated for, for the year. So, uh, they meet in like June or July, something like that, and decide what that is, uh, how that's going to be done. And, uh, they did, by the way, uh, ask, uh, Ms., Mrs. Hanson to serve as their, their president of that board this year.
I think it's amazing that John Chittiser has been there that long.
Yes.
Like forty-eight years or something like that.
He's, 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 uh.
It is amazing that we've been very lucky to have him as our librarian. Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution 2023 dash zero eight. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023 dash zero eight, a resolution confirming the mayor's reappointment of Emily Vonk to the Recreation Board for a five-year term and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Uh, request suspension of the rules requiring three separate readings. Take Resolution 2023 oh eight to its third and final reading.
Second. And move in second for suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mr. Francis.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023 oh eight.
Second. And move in second for the adoption of this resolution and a discussion. Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I do believe, maybe I'd just ask the mayor what he wants to tell us about Emily. How, how, how many terms has she served?
She, well, this, she is, uh, she was recently appointed last year for an unexpired term.
Yeah.
Um, and so it was just time for that, that term to be re-appointed. Um, anyway, uh, she's, uh, extremely happy to be a part of this because she's in charge of programming at the YMCA Council. Uh, this is a strategic partnership that we like to have. Uh, her insight is valuable, particularly, um, with regard to the Recreation Board. We're, we're, we are making headway in, in getting that, uh, moving forward and actually operable. Uh, anyway, she's, uh, um, wonderful to have, and if there are ever any decisions where she would have to recuse herself from discussion, council very wisely added an alternate to, uh, be able to vote in, in her place if she needs to. We like, we like Emily very much. She's, uh, she's, she's wonderful to work with.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution number 2023 day zero nine. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023 dash zero nine, a resolution appointing Amber Keener to the Board of Trustees of the Knox County Convention and Visitors Bureau and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Request suspension of the rules requiring three separate readings. Take Resolution 2023 oh nine to its third and final reading.
Second. And move in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mr. Francis.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023 oh nine.
Second. And move in second for the adoption of this resolution and a discussion. Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you know, Mayor, I do believe I've heard some things about Ms. Keener.
Yeah.
We're not going to talk about those.
I know nothing.
And, and, uh, she's, she's a very professional individual.
Hmm.
Uh, loves being a part of the community, likes to get into all kinds of things that is Mount Vernon. So it's, it's a pleasure to know that, uh, she'll serve on, um, we're going to have another, uh, resolution come up, but, um, you don't know how much we appreciate the volunteers that do this stuff, so, Mike.
John, I just noticed as you're talking, not that I wasn't listening to you. I think it's the scripters there in section one where it says Amber Keener be reappointed to the Convention Visitors Bureau.
Yeah, it's not reappointed.
It's just appointed. I think that's what you call that in.
Well, it's for the Visitors Bureau, it is appointed. For the, uh, next one, it is reappointed.
Yes.
Correct, but it does say reappointed on the Visitors Bureau.
On the legislation? Okay. Are you, thank you. I'll, we'll make that, uh.
Mine's that's it. Yeah. Just strike that as a script.
Section one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Second line.
Okay, okay, okay.
No, first line, sorry.
We can make that correction, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
That correction will be made.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Good catch, Mr. Hillier. Well, I'm glad you read all that stuff.
Only took you about four times to catch it. I got her finally.
Next is, is Resolution number twenty, that resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution 2023 day ten. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023 dash ten, a resolution reappointing Amber Keener to the Board of Directors of Experienced Mount Vernon, of Mount Vernon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Uh, request suspension of the rules requiring three separate readings. Take 2023 ten to its third and final reading.
Second. And move in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mr. Francis.
Move to adopt Resolution 2023 ten.
Second. And move in second for the adoption of this resolution and a discussion. Mr. Francis.
This is for a reappointment, so.
Yeah.
We're good there. Thank you, Mike. Uh, Mayor, would you like to add any words to, uh, Ms. Keener?
I think it's all been discussed.
It's all been said. Trust me, it's all been said.
Mr. Hill.
And all I can say is, uh, with, with all these, they're, they're done annually, so you have a whole lot of them. But, uh, we can't thank everybody enough to volunteer their time and their effort and, and then to come up here and, and be a, uh, a colleague on council at the same time to sit on the committees that you do, so we, we appreciate everything everybody does.
Thank you. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution number 2023 dash eleven. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023 dash eleven, a resolution approving the PND Comprehensive Development Plan as submitted by Highland Real Estate and approved by the Mount Vernon Municipal Planning Commission for parcel number sixty-six dash zero zero five zero one dot zero 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 on Newark Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, I'd like to give Resolution 2023 dash eleven its first reading. Um, on, it'll have a second reading and on February twenty-seventh, we'll have a third reading, um, at six forty-five. Um, the public, prior to that third reading, the public will be here to, uh, give their input on this, uh, particular, um, piece of legislation. And we'll have representatives from Highland Real Estate at that time give their, uh, side. There was, um, minutes sent out. I don't know if council gets the minutes of the, uh, commission meeting, but it's rather lengthy. Maybe, uh, two cups of coffee on Sunday might get you through it, but, uh, you should at least try to look at some of the minutes on this. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question about this? So, why did we wait till the third reading for the public to come? As, as Mike, it's just a question because it's like, you know, generally the three readings are designed to let people think about.
Statutorily, we were required to give thirty days' notice for that meeting.
My short answer was Todd said I had to wait that long to get it in the paper. And Jeff Gocke said we had to wait that long and that's when they're going to do their presentation.
That makes sense.
But it's, it's the notice.
Yeah.
I haven't recorded. Thank you.
So.
That resolution receives its first reading. Next resolution is Resolution 2023 dash twelve. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023 dash twelve, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for Phase Three of the Clintonville Sanitary and Storm Sewer Project and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. We give this its first reading, and if I could get a ten-minute committee meeting at the next meeting to remind folks, this will be a topic of conversation at the February utilities, which is now the first Thursday of the month.
Which is a week from this Thursday.
Okay, that's resolution receives its first reading. Next resolution is Resolution number 2023 day thirteen. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023 dash thirteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution number twenty twenty-two twenty-three dash thirteen to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I would like adoption of Resolution number 2023 dash thirteen.
Second.
Then move in second for the sus, for the adoption of this resolution and a discussion. Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mrs. Seville and counsel. Counsel, um, back, this has to do with our medical insurance of, on, of, on behalf of the employees. Uh, back in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we are a fiscal year, um, not an annual year renewal. We, we renew from June first till the end of the previous, in the next May, uh, thirty-first, uh, from a plan year. Uh, Medical Mutual of Ohio has been our insurance carrier for our employees' health insurance since two thousand. And, um, in the plan year of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, uh, I enrolled the city into, uh, a program that they were offering at the time whereby is if we were able to have a better experience rate than we had the previous year, then, uh, they would give us a rebate and we won pretty good. About three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars worth for one year. Um, and so, um, they've, uh, now abolished that program. I'm kind of wondering why. It's people like I who do things like this. So, um, anyhow, uh, it's, it's a, gonna be a benefit for us as you can see that, um, the dollar amount covers about one and a quarter, uh, months of premium for our plan, uh, on a monthly basis. All of the departments, we're talking about all those checkbooks, those funds, uh, s, they chip in to pay. Street Department does their part, people in the General Fund, utilities, and so on and so forth, cemetery and what have you. So what we have before here is a supplemental appropriation of these dollars going back into these insurance line accounts on behalf of all these various, uh, funds where we need to do this, that. Um, and so I thought it was a great program. It worked. Uh, they wanted to jack our rate up, and so that's what was driving. The fact is, is that at the time, they wanted to push a seven percent increase. And I realized, you know, for some, for some people, seven percent is probably not a lot, but I don't even like to have any increase. Um, and, and I find very, uh, very diligent on behalf of the city and their employees, um, and Medical Mutual. My, um, rep with Medical Mutual says, although I'm not a licensed insurance broker and I don't intend to be one, and by the way, we don't have one, I do all of that on our behalf of the city. And so consequently, he says, you know, I have never seen anybody who does as much due diligence work on a renewal than you do. He said, don't, and my, even the brokers don't go into the detail I do. So, and that's how we get there, you know, that's how we get there. And so, um, occasionally, we don't always win. I mean, there's some catastrophic issues that happen from time to time, but certainly in this one, it was a win-win for the city and for Medical Mutual. So, we're gonna put these dollars back in where they took them from and we'll start again.
Good job.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Next, next resolution is substantial, including what we did last month is an interim, and now it's about sixty million dol, over sixty million dollars. So, uh, we're, we're, it's, it's, uh, Resolution number twenty twenty-three days fourteen. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, a resolution to make appropriations for current expenses in said resolution supplements the interim appropriations and other expenditures for the City of Mount Vernon, State of Ohio during fiscal year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I would like adoption of Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen.
Second.
And move in second for the adoption of this resolution and a discussion. Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Okay, Terry, let's have some fun.
Thank you, Mrs. Seville and counsel. I want to appreciate the, uh, hard work that you folks put in on last Saturday morning in going through the, uh, supplemental parts and the overall, uh, budget process that, uh, that we have to do on an annual basis. It's, uh, it's a lot of work, uh, but I think it also gives you folks kind of a perspective and an outline as to what, uh, we're planning to do in the various departments throughout the rest of the calendar year. Remember that this particular piece of legislation is only a part of what is the overall appropriations. In December of last year, you folks did what was called a temporary appropriations, and so we need to take that half and this one and blend them together to make the overall appropriations bill. Uh, for those to tho, uh, for those of you who are interested in keeping track of these numbers, um, I can tell you the General Fund as a composite of the two halves together is eleven million five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Pretty close to about where we were last year, around about that twelve thou, or twelve million dollar number. Uh, with all other funds, uh, now coming together, uh, as we talk about these various checkbooks that we have, those funds, uh, overall composite with the General Fund involved, sixty-three million, two hundred and forty thousand, four oh nine. Sixty-three million, two hundred and forty thousand, four oh nine. That is the grand total of what, uh, the two halves all put together will, uh, comprise of. Uh, there was some questions in our, um, committee meeting that we had earlier, uh, this evening. Uh, counsel, if you would take a look on, uh, I think it's page ten, uh, of this particular piece of legislation, and I can help clear up some things for you as well here. Uh, in around about the middle of the page, you'll find four, C four, Fund four zero two. And when you look at your worksheet, that, the handout that we were using on Saturday, uh, some were going, I can't get these to match up, and that's because you need to know that other half that happened in December. So I did, uh, during the, um, convening time that we had before this, uh, meeting started, I did go down and make very diligence, knowing that, yep, everything does match up directly. Also, Fund four oh five, Roads and Bridges, that was our bigger one that we had, and the same thing has happened there as well. If you look at your worksheet, um, in fact, uh, Mr. Hillier, if you'd be so much obliged to me on this one here for a second. If you look at four oh five and the road, Roads dash Brick, it says eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. However, there was twenty thousand put in the interim, so when you put the two together, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand will get you the number and right with your two oh five. That's correctly right where that should be at, so. Uh, overall, I can tell you the two do tie di, they do tie together and, uh, that will, the document that you had is your worksheet, is your final worksheet, um, totals up with the two halves. Mrs. Seville, anyone else have any questions?
Thank you, Terry, for your, your diligence in doing that, and thank you, counsel, for the long meeting we had on this Saturday and going into detail and discussing. Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you. And just to remind you that it's not our budget, that's our appropriations. Sometimes people confuse those two terms. This is what the council does, is they appropriate. Next resolution, it was added this evening, it's resolution twenty twenty-three days fifteen. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a three-year contract with Knox County for information technology services and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen to its third and final reading.
Second. Then moved in second for the suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I would like adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
Second. Then moved in second for the adoption of this resolution and any discussion. Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Rob, would you like to talk about this?
Counsel, this is a resolution to, to change our IT contractor. We've had some difficulties recently and after discussions with the court and discussing it with other members of the administration, Mr. Zick has negotiated a, a contract that will have the county be our IT provider. They will be providing a, one, a new employee who will be based here in the city. In addition, we will have access to other members of the IT staff if needed, as well as to provide long-term planning to get our, to help make our network more robust and protect the city and its data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, and that concludes the resolutions for this evening. We move now on to ordinances. The first ordinance is ordinance number twenty twenty-two days forty-seven. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, an ordinance fixing the number of hourly employees of the City of Mount Vernon in the water and wastewater departments and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Moved to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two forty-seven.
Second.
Then moved in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Francis.
Does anybody have any questions about this ordinance?
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
No.
Mrs. Seville.
No.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
No.
Let me count it up. Five to three? Four to three, I'm sorry. Four to three, the ordinance is adopted. We, we now, that, we now move to the final ordinance, is ordinance number twenty twenty-two days forty-eight. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash forty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio to make transfers within line accounts in amounts of five thousand dollars or less without the consent of the council of the City of Mount Vernon and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to amend the amount of this from five thousand to three thousand.
Second the motion for the amendment. Then moved in second that the, this ordinance be amended within the line accounts in the amounts of five thousand, to amend that to three thousand. Any discussion on the amendment?
We talked about this in our committee meeting. Does anybody else have anything they want to say?
Thank you.
I'm just thrilled to get it up off.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
This resolution is amended. Back to Mrs. Seville for.
I would like to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash forty-eight as amended.
Second. Then moved in second to adopt this ordinance as amended. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Do we have anything else to say?
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted, and that concludes the legislative portion of our meeting. We now move to remarks of the administration. Mayor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. President and council. Just a few things I want to share with council. We have the contract for our fireworks for the Independence Day celebration. We are waiting to hear from the Foundation Park Conservancy on a rain date. So once we have a rain date, we can put that into the contract, and we'll have that. It will be the same as in the past seventeen two fifty, I think, is what the line item was that we just talked about on the appropriate fireworks. Seventeen five, and we did hear from our benefactor that they are going to do the same level as before. So appreciate Ariel Corporation for pitching in our Independence Day celebration. Also, I also send out, as a member of the chamber, I did send out newsletters to all employees. I'm not, I'm not sure if you guys received it or not. I'm not sure if council received it, but there are, I'll make sure that goes out to council members. Sorry about that. There are events coming up that, ribbon cuttings and trainings and so forth like that. If you want to take, if you want to be a part of that, you're welcome. We are members of the chamber, so we get the benefit of being able to take advantage of their benefits as well. The mayor's youth leadership council met this past Thursday and did lunch packing. They purchased lunches, purchased the ingredients and the supplies for lunches for the winter sanctuary. And so, and then we, after the council meeting here on Thursday in the afternoon, they stayed around and packed the lunches, and then the rain came down like cats and dogs. Anyway, we ended up taking it out to them and at the Norton Street location, and they were very, very happy, very thankful. And I know that the council was extremely happy to do that as well. So anyway, speaking of the council, I'd like to welcome Olivia Stein, who is back here, sort of job shadowing our contractor for the video switching. She wants to be an editor. So, said, well, have I got the job for you, just to try to, to get some experience. Anyway, Olivia's also been very good at taking notes and providing the meeting minutes for the mayor's youth leadership council. And speaking of which, I'd like to thank President Hawkins for speaking. I'd like to thank David Stoller, the treasurer, Terry, for giving us a little bit of update, and Mr. Gotkey for giving us an explanation on our partnership with the Area Development Foundation. So we got to see a little bit of all of that happen tonight. And so I'm just very proud of this, this whole team and making, and reaching out to the youth to understand more, in more depth, how the local government works. Mr. President, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, council, on behalf of my office, the effort which pays.
Mr. Stoller.
Give me a second here, Dave. I emailed, I emailed this out to all of you, and so just wanted to go through real quick, kind of an update, what happened in two thousand twenty-two. So we had, we had a very good year collecting tax, and so I sent you, sent you the form that I've done in the past where the yellow is withholding, the green is residents that live in the city but work outside the city, and then the red is business profits tax. So as you can see, the withholding is the largest part, and that's what I keep saying that you need to protect, and, and that's your golden, golden goose. But from last year to this year, the withholding was one point four million higher than two thousand twenty-one. The red, as you can see, that grew quite a bit. That was one point six million higher than last year. So all in all, it was three, three point two million dollars more tax collections in two thousand twenty-two than in two thousand twenty-one. So you can see, we're coming back and we're even above what we were pre-COVID. So I thought that was pretty good news.
Very good.
May I ask a question? Um.
Yeah.
So the income tax was up twenty twenty-two. You know, everybody hears, there's not enough employees, people don't want to work, that whole... Is the income tax higher because a lot of people had to pay a higher wage? Is the income tax higher because there's more people working, or is the income tax higher because of both?
If you look at two thousand twenty, that's when a lot of businesses shut down, and there was a lot of unemployment going out in two thousand twenty, maybe even into two thousand twenty-one. We don't collect tax on unemployment. So some of it, I would say, is people coming back to work, and, and some of it is probably higher, higher wages. I know gelled when in two thou, it was the last part of two thousand twenty-one, put out, we are hiring for nineteen dollars an hour minimum. That's our, they were flying planes around. So that drove up a lot of hourly wages in, in the industrial part. So it's probably a combination, I would say, more, more jobs and, you know, they've increased the amount that they're paying.
Late eighties, early nineties, I worked there for seven years. When I left, I made nine dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Gelled when, and was right up next to management. That's how much that increased.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brawn.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mrs. Keener.
First, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Francis for the work that you did to bring together the employee appreciation luncheon. And he spoke at that, and I, I know that other council members weren't able to be there and see that, but he did a very nice job. And I think that our employees really, really appreciated being appreciated and recognized for their time of service. So thank you for the work that you did there. And also thanks to our street department. I'm sure it was Mel really out there cleaning all the streets when the snow came down, right? Those two. But they did a great job getting out there and, and clearing roads during this last snowstorm. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Get ready for Wednesday. It might come again.
Yeah.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. I've had quite a few calls, and I know Mr. Severns has got these too, about the temporary signage down. More specifically, you know, people put them out, and then they blow into the streets. And I just want to remind folks, there is legislation that those shouldn't be out there, but there's, I've spoken with Mr. Brawn, and there's no real teeth to enforcing what we currently have. So can you help me just a smidge with people that are listening? The zoning revamp that we're doing, we'll give that a little more teeth.
The, the, there is a signage component in the, the current zoning rules. And as councils are aware, we have been working on a, we started last year, and we're continuing to this year, a total rewrite of our zoning code to move it into the twenty-first century. And as part of that, we are looking at signage because our current sign code has some significant deficiencies. As Mrs. Woods noted, that it, you know, signs that end up in the tree lawn or in our right-of-way, we have difficulty dealing with that. There are also some significant issues with the political signage ordinances, which we can't enforce right now. So those are something that we are working on. We have another meeting coming up, I believe, the first of February. We're going to get together with the contractor to talk about where we are in that and review additional changes that we're working on, and hopefully by, I'm, actually, I'm not sure exactly the timeframe, but it'll be this year that we'll be bringing the total rewrite to council to discuss with you what we'd like to see happen. So.
Thank you. I appreciate the work on that, because I know we've got some citizens that are very really concerned about that, to the point where I'm hearing we're not the colonial city, we're the crash city, and, and they're frustrated.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I want to thank Todd for setting things up for our meeting Saturday. Thank you very much. And Terry, for your outstanding job. Appreciate it. And for council, for everybody being there Saturday. And it was pleasant. Nobody got mad. It was nice. And the mayor was there, so I want to thank everybody. I did miss Jeff, though. He didn't come this year. I thought he'd be there. So I, I did miss you, Jeff. That's all I have.
Something I'll never say.
And the street department did do an outstanding job. I agree with Amber. I had other people in the city tell me, boy, the streets were so good. They got those cleaned fast this year. So they did do an outstanding job with the snow. Thank you.
Mr. Francis.
I have nothing, Mr. President.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, I'll make this quick, but I did want to update you. You heard me ask about an update of the Mazza property. I think you, I want to enlighten you with what I've heard. Mr. Ball sent me an email, and I have a correspondence back to him, says, below is an update, the Mazza Project three oh one, North Marlberry Street. At this point, the demo is completed, so we do not believe he is required to have financing. All right. So Mr. Ball, or Mr. Mazza said, we expect to have occupancy starting by the end of twenty twenty-three. That's this year. Bear in mind, that could push with key component backlogs with this current environment that we're in. That said, construction will continue. As far as permits, we have obtained the window permit and a general permit with electrical temporary. We are working on obtaining the results of our permits and final plans, but the state, like the rest of the world, is backed up as well. Thank you. So I asked Brian, and make sure it'll push. I assume someone has checked the permits he said he had. The answer I received was, these permits are through the state, and we do not normally check to see these, check these. The permits are through the state, and we normally, we do not normally check these. You've been updated on the Mazza property. I just hope he's holding true to the twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayhem.
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Severns.
I just want to send kudos as well to the street department, and thank you for a couple of those. And I was not out there with a shovel, but I did have a friend of mine today where I work told me that his street was cleared about two o'clock, and it's normally not till late in the evening, and that was Spruce Street. So they, they did get them done quickly, and I appreciate that. I do want to reiterate what Tammy mentioned about the signage. I, I did actually take pictures of those signs where the gentleman who called me about specifically, and they were laying on the ground. There were actually a couple that I was able to make a contact, Joe Reinhardt, about, and he got those picked up quickly. They weren't his signs specifically, but it was an organization that he was supporting. But I, I guess, Rob, what I'd like to know is our, are the, is it legal for anybody to put a sign up? Because I've been seeing some little signs with a seven four oh, five oh seven number about sewage.
Well, it depends on where the sign is. I mean, you know, are they in, are they on private property? Are they in the, are in, are they in the right-of-way?
Intersections, like in the, between the sidewalk and the curb.
In the tree lawn. Probably not.
They're not legal. So if I want to stop my vehicle, get out and pick them up and throw them away, that is okay?
I'd strongly suggest that you not do that.
All right. The point is, let's try to strengthen the code on these signs because it does look junky. And then they leave them go, and it, and they, and they, it does, does look junky in the city. So let's try to clean that up. Hopefully we can. Thanks. That's it. I tried to be real positive. And that kind of was just.
I picked up signs, people stuck in our churchyard, and I just couldn't handle it.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, council. That concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. Thank you of the media for being here. And that being said, I call for adjournment.
Still move?
Second.
It's been moved in second. We adjourned. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Thank you for a long meeting.